What was sent.
That's all I have too.
And I mean, the applicant could share his screen maybe.
It's can you do that or would you?
Yeah, let me can. So I click the share screen bottom at the bottom.
Yes, try that.
There you go.
And then what do I do here?
Highlight the blue square where your document is.
Okay.
And then, yeah, and then go to where you're trying to find, because we can see you now.
Can you see my screen?
Yeah, we, yeah, well, we're looking at you, gonna get your screen.
Okay, clicked on the blue.
Yep, and then it's share, there's one, you have to do it twice.
I have to click twice?
Yeah, you have to highlight what it is.
There you go.
There it is.
Now you see my screen?
Yep.
No, I can't.
We see you though Mitch.
Okay, hang on one second.
We see you and your screen.
You still do?
Yeah, I was seeing the screen.
Oh, what's your dog's name? It's really cute.
That's our my old, our dog that passed away and I just have to find it.
Man cave, Bill.
Man cave.
This is more fun. I like looking at other people.
What you're really doing.
This is really what we're doing, yeah.
Can we title the project man cave?
So mine isn't as good as Bill's, but do you want to start with the site plan first?
I think that's probably appropriate, yeah.
Okay, so you you're familiar with the lot?
Yep.
And you you're seeing everything okay, right?
Yep.
Okay, so you're familiar with the lot in kind of in a nutshell, I've been looking for two years for a building that basically I use as a man cave that houses my RV. I have a forty foot RV. I have a fishing boat, a couple of cars, and I have, I like to have a workshop and just a space to go. So I'm, I've been looking for two years, haven't found anything, finally decided just to look at land to build something like this. And I've looked at this property on and off since I drive by it for, you know, a few years. And I thought that would be the ideal location for us. It's walkable from our house to do this. And so I made an offer on this, on this parcel contingent on the planning board's approval of the building. I know it's a commercial or industrial use. It's going to be primarily for personal use. However, I did add a fifteen by twenty-five foot, I believe, office space that I'm gonna have heated and air conditioned with an adjoining bathroom. That is going to be, you know, commercially done with a commercial door so that it looks like it uh, looks like a nice office. That I will, I'm gonna make available for rent to somebody. Um, it would be nice if it was like a architectural or a landscape architect, some, something like that, that could also use some of the grounds. The, the whole concept or the whole idea of the building is to make something that beautifies the site, that architecturally significant or, you know, looks good, kind of cleans up that area. And I'm also planning on, we grow dahlias. I was planning on putting eight to ten raised beds in there and grow dahlias and perhaps do community gardens or do something so that the community can be involved. I also thought maybe for that office space, we could use it for the five towns uh, school, you know, education or whatever. I know they're looking for space. So it's not going to be a commercial building per se where there's going to be any income derived from it. But it's gonna be a, you know, you saw the plans, an attractive building that uh, will, it will look beautiful when we're done with it.
It seems commercial and it seems commercial in nature.
Yeah, well, you know, the idea is, in all honesty, when we're done RVing in, you know, seven to ten years, to resell that building, we wanted it to look, have a really neat look so that some saw a company, let's just say a distillery, if a distillery could go in there. You know, something unique could go in that spot that would like the building. It's just a big wide open building. Or some type of, I was thinking electrical, you know, like in a, you know, like Headstrom Electric, you know, they're building the same thing. But uh, something, some other type of uh, commercial enterprise could go in there and they would find it attractive and, and, you know, be interested in it. So I can answer any questions. I, I can tell you, you know, it's, I put the drawings and everything preliminary really quick because it is contingent, your approval is contingent on the sale. Um, and I think, I believe we close on the tenth of November, the fifteenth of November, one of those days, I can't remember.
So is that driveway, is that an existing curb cut?
Uh, yes, that's the existing curb cut. And the driveway was just, is just planning, I'm planning on doing pea gravel or crushed granite, something like that, not asphalt. I want the building to kind of look like that uh, you know, that farm stand type look where something down the road would, you know, have like an agricultural feel to it. So that's why there's not going to be any blacktop per se.
Just, I just want to just touch on one thing Mitch.
Yeah.
You know, the planning board did go through and review this subdivision. It was a minor subdivision. You know, a couple of years ago, um, there was, um, there is some concern in this subdivision and in this area about stormwater.
Yeah, tell me about that.
Well, there was just, you know, in the, in this whole area, um, the drainage is not the greatest. Wetland, there's wetlands identified in the rear of your property.
Yeah.
And then from here, everything gets funneled down into town.
Yeah.
You know, and as, as you can imagine, the more impervious and the more development that happens, it's channelized and throwed it right down into the, into the harbor and downstream in this area, we've had, there's definitely drainage issues that the town is dealing with and property owners are dealing with. Um, so I just want you to be cognizant of that, that approval. I think on the subdivision plan, there is some um, a note about that, um, any projects that come before the planning board would be, stormwater would be looked at and addressed. And there is the one provision in the ordinance that I, I referenced to Tom Headstrom, um, Bill Lane about the twenty-five year storm, um, over twenty, over a two hour duration. And I, I guess someone will probably have to weigh in on that. I gotta believe your project. It's not a huge, huge development, um, that's happening. You're not doing impervious, you know, pavement.
No.
So I gotta, you know, I think that's one thing that will probably have to be addressed and, and probably have to retain someone to provide that, some sort of statement on stormwater.
Yeah, um, one of the things, you know, my plan is, uh, if you've, if, and you guys have probably already been through there and walked that land or seen that land. Um, where you see that squiggly line, you know, where it's, it, the tree line there. If you go back there, that drops down like six feet into that wetland area. We would not touch any of that stuff. In other words, we're not going to build or, or, or touch any of that or along that one edge with, where the house is falling down. That edge, we, we wouldn't fill, literally, the only thing we would do would be improve the pad where that building is going to go on. So, um, we won't, we won't be, we won't be doing any type of, anything to affect the current drainage. That's not saying it won't need some more work on it. But we're not going to do any excavation or clear cutting or, or brush removal of that big giant area between us and Rankin's. So that we'd leave completely as is.
Got it. So Mitch, this is Ethan, um, just a quick question.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't, I don't see anything on there, um, regarding removal of trees. So on the front side there on Cold Corvett, you're not planning to take down any of those trees?
No, I'm not. The only, you see where the, you see where the, um, building, the corner kind of goes into those trees right there?
Yeah, I can see that, yeah.
Those are, those really aren't, those aren't, um, any, those are, um, what do you call it?
Alders?
No, well, some are alders, but very few, um.
They're kind of like saplings there, aren't they?
They're su-
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'm pretty familiar with the lot.
Yeah, so all that stuff is sumac. So any of that, we would selectively clear back, keeping the good trees, of course.
Right.
Just removing anything like that. So we have drainage, so it's not hitting the building. But I, I walked it and, and marked it out and we, we really wouldn't be cutting down any trees other than cleaning up. So anything that's dead or will remove or anything that's got vines hanging, I noticed there were some vines that had killed a tree or killing a tree, we'd get rid of that. We'd really spruce that front and side and back of that property and that tree line up a lot. So it would, it would look a lot like, uh, what I'm envisioning, a really nice, uh, nursery when it's on.
Yeah, I definitely would, I definitely will commend you on the, on the building. I think it is a nice looking structure.
Yeah.
And, um, I think, I think, I think it is, um, done with consideration of the, of the neighbors and I think they will appreciate that building as opposed to what could go in there, so.
Right, that, I mean, that's, uh, you know, it could easily be the metal building that's like down the, on the other side. So I didn't want, and that's not me, I would never want, I wouldn't want that to begin with. So I did want something that was unique and character and, and would help beautify the area.
Yep.
It'll also, it'll also kind of buffer that transition from the commercial area to the residential area much better.
I thought so.
You know, I think it's a great, great, good, good idea.
Jeremy, what do, what do the height require or the height limitations of the?
Question.
Forty feet.
They're at thirty-eight here.
Yeah, and that's thirty-eight.
Can I ask what the purpose of this little bump up is for in the middle, like this clear story, which is not really a traditional barn like?
You mean on the roof?
Yeah, what's that all about?
Plans?
It's just, it's just to add light.
Mitch, can you open up your plan? So, so-
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, sorry about that. Um, hang on one second. Does that help?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so I guess my, I mean, is that the only reason? Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
That's just, that's just an architectural element to, to give it character and my inspiration on that was the old, um, grain, grain elevator buildings in North Dakota, Montana, Minnesota. Just that type of look, kind of a, kind of a western look. Um, and all that's going to do on the backside of that, there'll be an industrial fan that'll be attached to a humidistat. So if the humidity gets to a certain level, it'll, it'll open up and, you know, humidity, but it's just for light.
So, so can I make a couple of kind of non-binding comments on this?
Absolutely.
They're aesthetic.
Yeah.
But I, I have a bit of a, I'm, I'm a big fan of context and to have an element like that just put in there because it matches a mid-grain, mid-western grain elevator to me shows an insensitivity to, um, traditional barn structures in Maine and to the context because not going to be a grain elevator. It's doing, speaking to absolutely none of the uses you plan on having it there. And to me, it seems to unnecessarily add eight or ten feet in a neighborhood that's next to a residential neighborhood for no functional reason. Yeah, so I really question the need for the massing. And there are many other ways you could get light into this building. In fact, one of the questions I have is with all the windows because you've got a series of very, and again, this is all aesthetic. I'm coming at this from my architectural head and carrying a lot of aesthetics of the, and I think it's great that we've got this building going in here, so. Um, we don't, we don't have, so back to the windows. Square windows are not traditional at all, not in barns, really not either in residential structures around here. And I, and it seems like the windows are very small and leave a lot of just blank space on the rest of the walls and you could achieve the same effect and probably get better light by bringing all those windows that are up on that kind of clear story grain elevator bump up and just running them along the edges of the building on either side. Um, and so I have, that, that, that for me is an issue because I think you could lose a bunch of mass and actually have it look better and function better.
Um, that's just okay. I thought, you know, one of the designs that, you know, I designed this and then I had Phi, Phi do the actual work, but one of the things I was working with was a barn structure. You know, the idea of doing a barn structure that had more of a main element to it. And it just seemed to me, um, the look seemed so massive and it didn't break apart the, the roof, the roof line very much. I wanted something that broke the roof line in a way that's kind of a contemporary take on, you know, that whole, the vertical mine shaft design of a building. So I just thought this was much more unique in terms of architecturally versus trying to put a main barn in there. And, you know, with this big glass door in the front, I just thought it, I thought it looked cool. Versus, versus having it look like a main barn.
Okay, I mean, to be honest with you, I really would have much rather, I'd much rather see a main barn here because we're in Ma- Maine. And one of the things, and one of the things, I mean, and again, as an architect, one of the things about industrial buildings and the vernacular in barns is that they're made to be functional. That's why barns look the way they do and that's why the vernacular of Maine is the way it is, is because it's designed functionally to work with the elements and to be a cost-effective way of creating space and to manage.
Yeah.
So, so, so I look at that and go, somebody's, yeah, I mean, to me, it looks like it's, it's a bit of a novelty and it, I, I think it loses something in terms of fitting in with the area, but this is non, aesthetics are non-binding. That would not be a reason to move forward, project forward. I would just much rather see larger windows and a more traditional barn space. And I'd rather see that mass brought down lower, given the neighborhood it's in. That would be my comments.
Okay.
Can I comment on that? And I, I appreciate your comments and you're, you are right, there are no design review criteria for this project because of the zone. However, there is the provision about relationship. And when I look at these things, I always want you guys to, as the planning board members, to understand and remember your approval criteria. Right? You have a certain set of criteria that you have to approve your project by. And there is a, the section about relationship of the proposed building to environment and neighboring buildings.
Yeah.
And in that section, it says the physical placement of proposed buildings or structures on the site shall fit harmoniously with the terrain of the site and with neighboring buildings or structures, taking into account the bulk location and the height of the buildings or structures and such natural features as slope, soil type and drainage. Proposed buildings or structures shall not interfere unreasonably with solar access of existing buildings or adjacent parcels. So I'm just throwing that out there, that there is a section on height and bulk. Just pointing that out. Um, so Mitch, you may want to think about that moving, you know, like as you, as you move forward.
And Rosie, we've seen alterations where that type of bulk has been moved over and become a dormer. Um, I believe on the Bay Street project, uh, where originally it was the Widow's Peak on the top there and they, they redesigned it and put it over. Still, it was a monolith on the side, but it was at least a dormer that brought the, the height down.
Right.
Yeah, no, I, listen, I have no problem doing any of these things because frankly, it'll be a hell of a lot cheaper to build it.
I mean, that's also my thinking, I think, well, and, and quite frankly, I mean, again, putting my architecture hat on, my master's degree was on daylight and daylight and buildings and how you bring it in. And I don't think this works. I mean, as a, as a design professional, I don't think this, these windows are going to bring the light in the way you think it's going to come.
Rosie, can I, can I make a point real quick? This is a storage building and when you store the RV and boat and car, you actually don't want sunlight hitting. So I, yeah, way that, those lower windows on the first level to me won't, won't fade the paint, is really all it is. Um, upper ones probably won't either.
And Jeff, that's, that was one of the reasons on the one side, you only see the two, is because you don't want too much light. And the other thing I didn't want, it was from a security reason, is, I mean, those windows are bigger than they appear. They're, you know, they're fairly good size, but I just wanted them to not be a security issue where people could break in or climb. I mean, trust me, if somebody wants to get in, they can get in, but you're not looking in necessarily.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, and it's a good point about Jeff's, Jeff's comment. I mean, I just, to me, I'd rather see a traditional looking barn. I can't see the bump up makes no sense to me. And, and, and in terms of the windows, it's not proportion. I guess it's the fact that they're square, right? And start, what, I mean, drive around Camden and see how many square windows we have. And I'm not saying they should all look traditional, but I think they may even, they'd make, might look more like a traditional barn and the building might fit in better in the area if those buildings are more traditional, even if they go up slightly, so you don't get them lower down, so you don't get the visibility issues, but I, you know, and it just had a traditional roof.
The only thing I can say is, you know, it's gonna look like a big honkin' metal pole building because it's going to be a metal building. So, you know, you're gonna lose the barn aesthetic with the, it's gonna look more like an equestrian uh, riding stable when it's done, when it's made to look like a barn with the metal building.
But, but that's what, it's a barn, right? I mean, that's what you're claiming it is, it's a barn.
Yeah.
I'd like it to, I mean, to me, I can't see the point of, well, it's a barn, but we're gonna make it look like a grain elevator because it's gonna make it look better.
Okay.
Well, it just gives it more mass and why would a grain elevator be sitting in Camden, Maine? But I could see a barn being in Camden, Maine. That's, we've got lots of barns. Maine, Maine is full of barns.
We did some drawings with it and I wonder if I have them. I mean, oh, I-
Again, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole. It's not my job to tell me what I should be doing, but that's just my immediate reaction.
This is Ethan. I'd like to just jump in again and, you know, Rosie, I really appreciate your insight and, um, expertise on this stuff. Um, from my perspective, as someone who's in the neighborhood, um, I actually think it's an interesting and attractive building. And I think that the, um, the breaking up makes it look more interesting than, than just what a straight barn would. And, and I recognize Rosie's comments and respect them as far as they, it does not look like a traditional main barn. I get that. But the other buildings around there aren't super sexy either. Um, you've got, you know, a couple of brick flat buildings. You've got that other metal structure, um, you know, and, and the way this one is, the way it's set back and the use it's going to be put to, um, is very low impact in my opinion on the neighborhood. Um, that, you know, and, and, and I think quite frankly, this would be visible from my house. Um, and, and, um, you know, and, and I, I don't really personally have any problem with it.
It's good enough.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think the use is terrific for that area. That's really an ideal.
Yeah, I mean, it's great. Couldn't ask for better.
About that, yeah.
All right, um, and so Mitch, I would just, I think you heard the planning board's thoughts on this and, you know, I'd take, I, I want, I want you to make sure you under, you know, you get your project moving along. You've got a, a timeline coming up here. And I don't, I don't want to, you know, monkey with it too much. But, um, I, I'd like to see this moving forward, so.
Couple of- Jeremy, can we just circle back to soil erosion and sediment barriers and Jeff Sender, some of the things that were, um,
Yeah, I'm not, that's where I was going, Matt.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, um, so, um, and Mitch, just so you know,
Yeah.
The plan is site plan review ordinance, which is Article twelve, site plan review of our zoning ordinance. Section three has the site plan content. Right? So your site plan, when we're gonna get that fifteen days before the, hopefully, the, what date are we looking at? November fifth? If that, you, fifteen days before that, we get a plan and your application has all of these items, right?
Yeah.
Action three. Now, this is where section four is supplemental information and that's why meetings like this are important, pre-application meetings, because section four is supplemental information where the planning board can decide um, that they would like to see is some additional information. And within section four, it talks about, um, that, that, what, what the planning board could ask for, and they could ask for existing and proposed topography of the site at two-foot contours, right, stamped by a surveyor. Um, they could ask for that. And then there's a section on stormwater drainage and erosion control. Um, and I think, and it talks about engineering calculations. Utility plan and, and some other sufficient technical capacity, which we don't need to get into. But I think it is prudent for the board to look at the supplemental information that the board can ask for um, to address Matt. And I think the board's concern when the subdivision came to you for approval, everyone said, it, there's a, there's a, a note on that subdivision plan that says the, I don't know exactly what the, remember what the phrasing is, but that stormwater will be addressed during site plan review approval. So, since that's in there as part of the subdivision approval, um, I would recommend that you folks make a motion to look at your section, something in supplemental information. I would suggest asking for, that the applicant provides section four subsection one and two, which is the topo and stormwater drainage. Um, and then engineering calculations to make sure they meet our zoning ordinance requirements for the, uh, performance standards.
Who's the first one, Jeremy? Engineering calculations, but it's, it's section four subsections one and two. Sorry, I don't have it right open. I'm trying to find it quickly, but I don't have it right in front of me.
Yeah, so section four supplemental information, one and two, number one says existing and proposed topography of the site in two-foot intervals, which I think we may have. I don't know.
It's on the subdivision plan. It's on the subdivision plan.
Perfect.
So Dorsey did it on the subdivision, the two-foot?
On the survey, yeah, it's all surveyed.
Right.
But what he's proposing to do, whatever the finished grades are, needs to be on the plan.
Right, agreed. And that's what I'd like the board to, um, at least talk about or at least do a motion on. And then number two, um, Matt is a stormwater drainage and erosion control plan prepared by an engineer or landscape architect showing existing and proposed method for handling stormwater, directional flows, location, elevation, size of, we're not dealing with cash basins or anything like that. And then there's a section on engineering calculation, usually determine drains requirements based upon a twenty-five year storm frequency. Um, and I think that's what you ought to ask for because the subdivision approval that you approved said you were gonna ask for these, um, when projects come to you. So I think, um, I think that's what you should do. Um, that would be consistent with the subdivision approval that you did back in two thousand and nineteen. Um, and I, I am hopeful that Mi- Mitch can get this done. I would think he can. It's not a su- overly complicated project, but Mitch, I think you're gonna have to probably-
Yeah, who should, who should I go to for that?
You know, but I, I'm not gonna say Jeff Sender's are, are planning.
Conflict of interest.
Yeah.
He's got a conflict. I would recommend, I mean, I don't want to recommend anything.
Um, no, that's okay. With, can that Bill Lane guy do it?
Yeah, he's pretty busy though.
Oh.
I mean, teasing. They have existing information on this site. You know, they, they, they were the ones that did the two-foot contours. They have the plan. So someone doesn't have to recreate that. So it may be prudent to call them and see if Gartley and Dorsey can do it for you. It is not a recommendation from-
No, that's okay. Gartley and Dorsey?
Dorsey.
Yep.
D O R S K Y.
Just down the road.
Oh, Dorsey, gotcha.
You want their number?
Yeah.
I, I can send him the contact information.
Oh, that would be great.
Here's the number though, Mitch.
Yep.
Two, three, six, four, three, six, five.
Two, three, six, four, three, six, five.
Yeah, they're right around the corner from this lot.
Jeremy only gets a ten percent cutback and Jeff's number, that's it.
I got nothing.
Nothing, you get nothing, Jeff, nothing.
Mitch, Mitch, I only say this because they have done existing work on this.
No, that's great.
You can go find any other-
No, no, that's, I understand.
No, and again, as a caveat, joking aside, it, it does make good sense, Jeremy, in this case, without a, a tacit endorsement to say, hey, that work has been done. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. Um, some of those plans are already in place. And then Jeff, to your point, that it's just basically an, almost like an addendum to the work that's been done based on the, um, the revisions for that construction.
Yeah, this one should be straightforward. Um, I do want to see an exterior lighting cut sheet, um, in the packet though, to ensure that you're doing full cutoffs.
Oh, I, I have.
Oh, okay, I must not have seen that one.
And thank you for that.
That's good, man.
But that was good.
I did see a spotlight of some sort though.
It's the, it's the, um, McMillan lighting cut is the file.
Iron cut sheets, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I didn't see that one.
Uh, the Entra three-inch LED.
Yeah.
That's in the soffit.
Yep.
Yep.
They're just down.
Perfect.
All right.
And Jeff, before we leave the erosion control and the sediment barriers, I'm just to give Mitch, because it sounds like he's gone almost blind in this. Can we just do a, from your perspective, a tacit overview of what he might anticipate? What he's asking for, what he's, what he might anticipate in terms of, um, uh, alterations, design, engineering, in terms of, again, a sediment barrier or some kind of erosion control, just so he can anticipate.
Yours is really straightforward. Um, if, if Garland Dorsey doesn't have the time to do this- Yours is really straightforward, um, if, if Garland Dorsey doesn't have the time to do this, because they might not, because you're in a time crunch. And they're really busy, a landscape architect could do the same site plan for you, provide that to us. Um, but they have the survey, and so that's who you need to call first to get the survey, to get this plan done. Um, but my point is, uh, so really, at the end of the day, you're gonna take some gravel. And you're gonna replace it with some p-stone, but you're gonna take the gravel away, so you're gonna have less gravel.
Yep.
And then you're gonna put a building, so you might increase your impervious surface.
Right.
And to get around this increasing impervious surface, you can do what's called roof drip strips. And so basically, it's a stone, basically, it's a pack of stone underneath the soffit along the side of the building. That catches the rain, and then, and that's it, and that would, that would probably cover you in your stormwater management for this site.
Oh, sure, yeah, I know exactly, yeah, yep.
So that would probably, at the end of the day, that would probably be the only change to your site plan that I would see happen. To handle the extra runoff that's gonna be coming.
That's rich, Mitch, that will just have to be shown on the plan.
Yeah.
So Mitch, I, I will say, I'm available tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
And if you'd like to chat about some of this stuff, we can meet, we can maybe go, you know, we, um, we're not meeting in the office right now, but I can meet. Anywhere outside.
Yeah.
Um, and we can chat about what I think the board is trying to get at here.
Yeah, no, no, that's great, I was worried it was gonna be all kinds of, uh, re-excavation of the whole site. And, you know, on the side of the building, or on side of the property.
You know, it's just, it's, it's really about taking what you're proposing, give it to an engineer or a landscape architect and say. All right, you gotta do some stormwater calculations based on what is existing there and what I'm proposing to put there, and I gotta make sure I'm not increasing it.
Right.
And Jeff and Jeremy, do you, on the backside, there's that six-foot drop that pretty much goes into, there's the, the gully in the back.
Yeah.
Can you anticipate, Jeff, that he would have to do something in the backside there as well?
Uh, well, that's where the grading's gonna come out, um, and so that's where you do need, you know, a landscape architect or a civil engineer. To grade that out around the building, uh, because you're proposing a building that's all one level, looks like a slab on grade, so. I'm, you know, you're gonna have the same elevation all the way around the building.
Right.
Um, so that back left corner is gonna be tricky to regrade at a three to one, um, and get that slope stable. Before it gets into that wetland.
You're talking this area right here.
Yes, that's right, but that's where, you know, you're gonna fiddle with your finished floor elevation, because you don't want the driveway. That's where you need the site plan for us to approve. Um, because as is, we don't know what the elevation of that building is right now, if you put it too low, you're gonna get water into it. And the bottom, the back left corner will be fine, but if you put it too high, your back left corner can be, can have a lot of fill back there.
Right.
And this area, this is where that slopes down dramatically.
Yep.
Right in here.
Yep, so would you be opposed to moving it to the right a little bit?
Because if. No, I, I, no, I would, I had no problem, what I was trying to do is keep this open for gardens.
That's what I figured.
South, southeast side.
I mean, you might, at the end of the day, you might have to sacrifice that location and move it just a little bit away from that downhill slope.
Yeah, no, and we, you know, this is 75 feet from the street, we could come up, up a little too.
Yep.
It might, and Mitch, it might be in your best interest to, um, be proactive on that, rather than reactive.
Yeah. Yeah.
That'll wash out in the site plan, when you have an architect or a civil engineer designing, you'll talk with them and get that right.
Yeah.
Um, and that, it's really, to me, this, the, the rough layout of what you're proposing, I see nothing in our ordinance that's gonna. You know, stop you from doing what we're trying to do, um, but we do wanna see the stormwater runoff, and we do still need to make a motion. Um, so I'll make that motion now, I make a motion that, uh, we do wanna see section four subsection one and two topo. And drainage on the, us, on the site plan that you're providing us.
And that's proposed and existing topo.
Yes.
I'll second that, Jeff Sender's.
Okay, can I take a vote? Give me a wave, planning board members who are in favor, Jeff.
Aye.
I, Matt, I, uh, Mark, yes, and Ethan, yes, and me, yes, so that's five, zero unanimous.
All right, thanks for doing that, um, really quickly, one other.
Wait, Jeremy, can I jump in real quick?
Yes.
Okay, if, if, um, I know, uh, this is just a sort of a soapbox moment, but if, um, Rosie will yield the soapbox to me. Um, I recognize that this is an industrially zoned property, um, if I had my druthers. Um, I would see something that went in there that the neighborhood, uh, and then the town really needed. Something like a, um, senior center or affordable housing or something like that, and this is really, for me, it's a soapbox thing. Um, but, but I do think that, um, there, there is a need for some of these things in the town, and, um, it's, it's, it's a nice piece of property for something like that. Um, that's even, you know, and, um, I know that it, you know, it would take something to get it zoned, um, you know, residential. Um, that sort of thing, and, and it's not, it's not a guarantee, and I know that certain people are, are opposed to that, and there are good reasons for that. Um, but given the sort of residential neighbor, or, or nature of that neighborhood in general, and then. Um, the need that, that we have in town for, for affordable housing and, and senior living, I think it would be something that I would like to see. Something different, um, but again, I've, I've told you already that I appreciate the building, and I think that there's a lot of thought going into that, and the community gardens and that sort of thing. So I'm not going to oppose the project on that, but I, it's just, it's a soapbox moment, I wanted to get that on the record.
Can I make a comment too?
Sure.
You know, the Tibbetts, or can I make a comment, can I ask a question, you know, the, the brick boat slung brick building across the street?
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that owned by, is that, is that possible that that could be redeveloped into? Low-income ho- or not low-income housing, but senior housing or some type of residential area, or is that zoned industrial?
I'd take a rezoning.
Yeah, which, which building are we talking about, because the one directly across the street with the boats in front of it?
Yeah.
I believe that was purchased by Scott Hordy, is that correct?
I don't, yeah.
It's a condo, yeah, it's a condo ownership, and he owns one of those units, yes.
Yeah, that smaller building, I think the smaller brick building is his, and then the, I don't know about the larger Tibbetts building, I don't know who owns that one.
But I mean, that one is almost ideal for what you're talking about, I mean, that whole. That's one of the reasons why I designed a nice-looking building for this, is because I imagined that down the road. This might be fitting in with other types of housing.
Right, right, we'll let Jeremy chime in here, he's, it's his soapbox now.
Yeah, sorry. Um, yeah, no, I, I appreciate that, Ethan, I really do, um, you know, the, we don't have. Our commercially zoned, especially industrial zone properties, I've said this before, we don't have much land. In town that is zoned for that kind of commercial or industrial activity. It's criti- and I'm just gonna go to my kind of community and economic development hat here. It is critical that, you know, community like Camden does have properties available, um, to provide for employment. Um, entrepreneurs to be able to do thing, I mean, we need a variety of uses and zones in town, so I appreciate it. I understand, um, I'm gonna be looking at, tweet, again, tweaking zoning and. Doing some zoning amendments to look at minimum lot sizes and things, to try to, um, increase the possibility for more units. More dense development in the in-town part of Camden, um, we do have an RFP out right now for the Tannery site. Um, you know, and I, I think that is, um, it likely will see, I'm just throwing this out to you, likely we'll see some proposals coming in. For some residential on that Tannery site, um, I am working on a, um, the select board is gonna actually talk about. And on Tuesday, um, something I'm working on for a request for interest on the Sagamore Farm property. Which is a 77-acre piece of land up by the, by the state park, up by, um, Chip Lade's property. Um, and likely, that's all zoned residential, um, likely, we're gonna, you know, hopefully get some residential proposals for that. Um, so, I just wanna, Ethan, I, I appreciate it, affordable housing and housing is. Um, a significant concern in town, and I think we're trying to, to look at it. You know, the town has a couple of properties, again, that we're, we're trying to at least provide an opportunity for developer to come in and, and develop residentially. We get it, it's a, it's an issue from Kittery to Bar Harbor, really, uh, especially on the coast. Um, so, you know, we're, we're trying to address it, but we also need to make sure that we just don't become a residential community, um, as well.
Um, and I appreciate, I appreciate that, and respectfully though, Jeremy, we're talking about a commercial property that's being developed, almost non-commercial. I mean, it's being used for a small office space with, um, a lot of personal storage, and so it, you know, talking to me about jobs and creation and things like that. For something where we're doing something that's a personal project, um, doesn't really ring true. Um, if it is, I understand that the, the value of having a lot that is quote-unquote zone, commercial or industrial. That you can point to and say, we do have some, but it is not serving that per- particular use. Um, I don't think it's the best spot for that, you know, for, for a commercial, real industrial use anyway, I agree with that, so I'm happy to see something not industrial going in there. But the argument that that's why it's good to have, doesn't really, you know, float too much with me.
Well, I, I appreciate that.
But I do appreciate that you're doing, that there are other things that we're looking at, and I don't mean to talk over you, but I do appreciate that there are other things we're looking at. I'm just speaking to this particular lot, this particular project, and, and, and whether there, whether there's an opportunity to do something more with it.
Yeah, we did look at, and just so you know, this all does, what Mr. McMillan is proposing is a permitted use, and I, I understand that. Um, you know, there's not gonna be, I mean, there is a rental space, right, there's an office space here that is proposed to rent. He's also talked about the workshop in there, that a- at some point, that might be a workshop area that's available for a tradesman or a contractor to use as well. Um, but the proposed use, it does meet our permitted use requirements, it's storage, this is not a residential lot with an accessory barn on it. For storage, this is, storage is allowed in the zone, um, and it does not have to, you know, he does meet that requirement, so I, I appreciate it, Ethan, I just. Um, and, and hopefully, again, you know, I, I really like the idea, what Mitch said, you know, 10 years from now, when he's done, um. RVing around the country or whatever, um, that is the distillery or something like that, or, uh, you know, a value-added agricultural type. Um, facility could go in there, I, you know, mid-coast is booming right now with agriculture. Um, we got young farmers in, in, especially in the mid-coast, and having buil- buildings and that look like this in Camden. You know, could be really advantageous moving for, for job, and I'm, I'm appreciative of Mr. McMillan trying to, trying to do something with this site and, and moving forward, so. Um, that's all.
That's the way I look at it too, you know, in the future, what he's doing is he's defining this property. And it will be a nice, commercial-looking property. And when he says, you know, i- in seven, eight years, when it's time to resell it, it will be a defined commercial building.
Yes, and I, I totally agree and appreciate the, the, the building, I, I, again, I've, I've spoken in favor of the, 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 the actual structure. So, um, I don't disagree with that, Mark, and I appreciate that.
So, and to just jump in on everybody's soapbox moment here. After, after just finishing my man cave in a traditional barn.
Yeah.
With small windows, um, a man cave is important.
Yeah.
I second that. All those in favor?
I, I'm, I'm in favor of that, um. So.
It's also a she-shack too, because my wife, the door in the back is for her to go out to the garden, so.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I hear you, my man cave is not just for me, I don't know.
Right, yeah.
Nothing's just for me.
Yeah.
Non-gender-specific caves.
I'm sorry, um, all right, so we do need to set a date for a hearing on this, so that we can make sure Mitch is able to. Hopefully work with a, a design, a design professional to get stormwater stuff done and a site plan that shows that. Um, he, I think tentatively, what we'd like to do is try to have a, um, the public hearing on November 5th. Um. And Mitch, you said your, um, sales goes through when?
I think it's the, you know, it's the 10th, um, I have it here, that, you know, and I wouldn't be too, the, the seller has been very, very good. About moving things back, and, you know, he, he's been great, so. I don't think he'd have a problem pushing it back either, so if, if for some reason we get jammed up, and we can't get it done, I don't think he's gonna. All right, the closing is 11:15.
Oh, all right.
So, if for some reason, once I call these guys, and if they all say that they, they're gonna have a hard time getting everything done in time. Um, you know, we'll go back to the seller, and I'm sure he would be amenable to closing December 1st. You know, I, he seems like a real, real reasonable guy.
That, that shouldn't be a problem, if something comes up and it doesn't work, we've got the 12th that we can try to do a meeting, um, you know, that's not gonna be a problem. November 15th is Sunday, I don't know how things are gonna close on a Sunday, but.
Yeah, I know, I don't see that.
Uh, be- before we get into this, how's, how, how does members feel about a site walk? Uh, I know we. Or do we need it or not?
I was gonna mention that, Mark, and, I mean, we were there not too long ago on the property. But have, you know, I'm glad you.
Yeah, yeah, my perspective on it is that we, although we have sort of a policy like, yes, we'd like to do sitewalks, um. I'm really familiar with the lot, I'm not gonna speak for the whole board, um, and, and we did do a sitewalk at the subdivision not long ago. Um, I mean, other than seeing where the building staked out, which would, you know, be somewhat informative, I don't think there's a whole lot to glean from a sitewalk, but I'm happy to participate.
Well, my, my thought is, there's a, there's a whole lot of wetlands there, and in our previous sitewalk. We really didn't walk that area.
Into the back, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, it's really, it's so thick back there, and I'm a hunter.
Yeah, that's right.
Thick stuff, that, once you get past that tree line, it's almost literally impossible to walk through there, shocking.
So there will be.
Wait for the snow?
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's about it.
That, that fits your, your, your timeline, doesn't it, Mitch?
Huh?
That fits your timeline?
Yeah, no. Listen, it fits mine perfectly, I'd rather close in the spring, they're not getting anything done this year.
Um, what's the drop-off there, um, on the, on this topo, I can't, I can't see it, but.
That drop-off is six feet easy.
Yeah, it's pretty steep, I mean, we've been back there.
And that's.
I think it's more than six, Mitch, but.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's, I just, just going by how tall it is, when I'm back there, I can't see the top, so, yeah.
And that's where the wetland is, is at the toe of that slope.
Yeah.
It starts pretty fast right there.
Right.
Well, from, from what we're talking about, I'm gonna move that building up and over anyway, you know.
Yeah, definitely gonna be in your best interest.
Yeah, this was just arbitrary, I was just trying to be, to leave myself space, but I really don't need 75 feet from the street. So.
Um, maybe the, or do you wanna entertain Mark's, Mark's thought, please?
Uh, I don't need a sitewalk.
And, and, and Justin, Rosie, if it's okay, I mean, I'll just put a quick comment here, um, the sitewalk. What I would be looking for was just addressed by section four subsection one and two. That was the really important thing, and make sure that Mitch, as he's in the process of development, is aware of, uh, the previous requests from the, the planning board. And that would be, again, for a sitewalk, I, I don't know if we need to bring that back, I think we've already addressed that from my perspective.
I mean, for the most part, this, I mean, for reality, this building's going right on the flat area of the site, and there's no disturbance anywhere else on the site. The area that's being, gonna have the building is wide open, exposed, for the most part, and gravelled, kind of gravelly vegetation as it is now.
Mm-hmm, well, and again, I think it'd be a different situation, Jeremy, if Mitch were saying, you know, I wanna push this thing back, and I wanna do fill, and I wanna do all this stuff. But I, you know, you're hearing someone who's about to develop and or purchase, who's saying, you know what, I'm amenable to, let's walk it forward, let's walk it over. To make, again, he, your development easier, but also in terms of disturbance, in terms of erosion and water runoff, all that, to make it easier. Um, for both the development and for the community.
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
Jeff, I have a question, you mentioned a strip of, of gravel next to the building to deal with stormwater runoff. What is it?
Drip strip.
Roof drip.
Yeah, roof drip strip. Yeah, they go out, they go past the soffit, maybe a foot, foot and a half, and, yeah, it's just a. You know, it's just a stone trench with a pipe in the bottom of it, just that simple.
I had a barn, same thing.
Yeah.
Grain elevator?
Uh, no, it was a horse barn.
Careful, Rose, don't, don't get Rosie going on there, careful.
We're trying to get out of here.
You're trying to get out of here, don't open that grain elevator thing again.
I'm sorry I said grain elevator, it was my Midwest roots.
Yes, no, you wanna talk about dormers, let's get back to dormers, Mitch.
Okay.
I object to having my thoughtful comments characterized as soapbox-like gentlemen, just for the record.
Sorry, Rosie. All right, let's, let's try to keep this going, um, it sounds like, um, the mo- majority of the board. Let's, let's try to keep this going. Um, it sounds like, um, the mo, majority of the board does not, does, does not feel like they need a sitewalk. Is that correct?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, can we do a motion to set a, um, public hearing date for November fifth?
Yes, I will present a motion. Jeremy, I would like to present a motion for a public hearing on the, and I'm sorry that I don't have the exact lot.
Can I just, before you make this motion, that means that the, that the paperwork would need to be into the office on October fourteenth. That's two weeks.
Uh-oh, Mitch?
Let's just, you know, honestly, let's just, instead of trying to, I, I'm, I have to be gone tomorrow through Tuesday. So realistically, I can't get ahold of the, the Gartske, let's just push.
Thanks, Jeanie.
Uh-huh.
Thank you, big time.
I'll, tomorrow, can I just get back to you, Jeremy, or do, do we have to do it right now?
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
Well, here's the thing. The board, I think, could make a motion to set, Jeanie, how's this? Can we set a public hearing for two dates?
Yeah, I think we could probably word it that you'll hold tentatively schedule, and if not, it will be moved to. We could try that language.
I was, I mean, I'm thinking, Mitch, you're gonna have to work with us on the, these, we only meet certain times.
No, I know.
And, and if you're, you're gonna have to talk to your seller.
I will.
Because November nineteenth would be the next regularly scheduled meeting after the fifth.
Yeah. So let's do the, let's do November nineteenth, and I'll move back the closing until November thirtieth.
If the seller needs, um, something from the town, Mitch, um, you know, indicating about either how this meeting went or something, um.
Thank you, but I'm sure he's, he's fine.
Okay.
He's, we've already.
Watch us on YouTube.
So then, when do I have to get all my, everything into you if it's Nove, if it's November nineteenth?
It'd be fifteen days before that, so it'd be the fourth.
November fourth, okay.
Yeah.
And Mitch?
So that's over my, that's better.
Mitch, feel free to.
Thanks, Jeanie.
When you get back, feel free to reach out to me and.
I will.
We can meet and talk about some of this stuff and make sure you're, all of your submittals are, are, um, right, and we need, we got.
Yeah, no, I, I absolutely will.
Okay.
I, I for sure will. I'm gonna take, I'll, like I said, on Tuesday, uh, I'll call Gartley and, Gartley and Dorsky.
Sounds good.
I made a motion for a public hearing on the nineteenth.
Motion, may someone make a motion. Thanks.
I make a motion to have a public hearing tentatively on November nineteenth for this project.
I'll second that. Okay, we got, so can I get, can I get votes of those in favor from the planning board? I have a arm raised from Jeff, one from Matt Segal, one from Mark, Ethan, I'm not seeing. Can you holler Ethan?
I'm here.
Is that, are you in, in?
Yeah, oh, I'm not in frame, yeah.
Are you, are you in favor of us having a public hearing on the nineteenth?
I am, yes.
Okay, and so am I, so that makes, uh, I think five zero in favor.
Thank you, Mitch.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Jeanie, again, for taking us off the ledge.
I would suggest that if anybody has the names of landscape architects or somebody alternate, I think Gartley and Dorsky are booked out to the end of the year and beyond.
Oh.
I'm pretty sure. Yeah, that's what Will said the other day.
Mitch, we can, we can figure something out. I'll, I'll, um, chat with you in the next couple of days.
Yeah, Jeremy's your go-to on that.
That's perfect. I actually, you know, Paul, Paul Belcherd, you know who he is? Midwood, mid-coast landscaping?
Yeah.
He, he has got, he's got a good friend, the guy who's actually interested in that office space, who's a landscape architect.
Is that Asa?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it is Asa.
Well, there you go. That's who I was thinking of, but I didn't.
That's who I was thinking of, but I didn't.
Is that, I think it is Asa.
Asa Peets.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
Yep.
Can he, can he do that?
Yeah, he works with Gartley and Dorsky too.
Okay.
And he can do the site plan, if that's the question. Yes, he can.
Right, so he can get that data from, from Gartley and Dorsky and put it into his, um.
And we can barter the space over it.
I like that.
Okay, sounds good, Mitch.
All right.
Be in touch as soon as you get back.
Anything else you need from me?
Not right now.
How do I get out of here now?
Leave, bottom right corner there.
Oh, leave? The red button.
Just click red button, says leave.
All right. Can I go?
Sounded like an order, Matt.
I know, I know. It was like, it was subliminal only because it's dinner time in my household.
Yeah.
I know.
You should go quick. We're getting silly now.
All right, Mitch, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, last thing, um, maybe just to find a lot, um, go over the final future meetings. We're gonna do, um, sitewalk on the fifth and the eighth at nine o'clock at Tom Hedstrom's house.
Copy that.
Yeah, property. Um, and then we'll have the public hearing on October twenty-second. And then, November nineteenth will be the public hearing for Mitch's project.
That was November nineteenth?
November nineteenth. Also on the twenty-second, sorry to go backwards, but on October twenty-second, we will likely have a public hearing for Fox Hill. Um, they are looking to, just, it, they're not doing any construction, they're expanding the rooms, I think, by two or three in the existing building. But the way the zoning ordinance, um, was approved when the town was going through the whole rigmarole about whether or not Fox Hill could happen out there. There were zoning amendments done, um, and there's a process that they go through just to add, um, some existing rooms, um, to be rooms for Fox Hill.
I put that on the agenda, which means that I believe that you can vote to have that hearing because it is on the agenda. Otherwise, because you need to do that as well.
Someone wanna do that?
So, so I make, can I make a motion that we hear, hear the, um, project have a public hearing for Fox Hill on the twenty sec, October the twenty-second?
I can.
At the already scheduled hearing.
But it's not on the agenda yet.
Right, but it's the same date.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we all okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, we, it's a second, okay, we have a yes from Jeff, a yes from Ethan, a yes from Matt, and a yes from Mark, and a yes from me. That's official.
Great, thank you. Sorry, Rosie. So Jeremy, but that's not a zoning appeal situation? That's actually us that has to deal with that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, just checking.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's adding more commercial square footage. They're exceeding the amount, um, it's the way it was written, you know, I tried to finagle a way for not to have to go through this, because they're not doing anything. No one is gonna know there's any change, um, to the facility, but they've gotta go through this process.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, and one final thing, um, October fifteenth, I know that's a, a weird date, um, but I felt it was an important. Uh, Lyman Morse, um, has a project in the works. Um, they had the, um, fire this spring, um, at their, at their facility. They're doing some repairs to the large, um, large, um, marina building that, you know, that they work in. Um, the rest of the building, as I understand, is gonna have to come down. Um, so they will be demolishing, um, a bunch of that building and being, and building brand new. That's gonna have to come to you guys. So Gartley and Dorsky, and they're on a time crunch, um, for a lot, a number of reasons. So we're just trying to do a pre-app meeting with the planning board on October fifteenth. Um, hopefully you guys can do that. I know you haven't met a lot, so, since March, so we're just trying to jam it all in.
Pack it right now, yeah.
And I know.
Before you leave, Jeff, we're gonna double up meetings.
I was so close. I was out.
Well, I do have two planning board members that are, I think, in the wing, ready to come on, um, and the select board will entertain those, um, as soon as possible. That said, what I wanted to get through was some of these projects, um, with an existing board, rather than having two brand-new members, um, dive into full-on site plan review without having, um, gone through it. So what I'm gonna try to do is reach out to those two members and say, watch the next couple of meetings, um, so you understand what it really is.
And you'll warn us, Jeremy, so we, we behave.
I expect, I expect you to leave here every day.
That's funny.
So they're ready for us.
I just, I'm okay with the fifteenth.
Okay, everyone else?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Great.
October.
Load it up.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Are we all set?
Yes.
Anything else?
No.
We can adjourn.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanie.
Hi, Jeanie, thanks.
Bye, Jeremy.
Thanks, Jeremy.